I call to order the regular meeting of the City of Aransas Pass City Council, March 15, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Let's all rise for the invocation and pleasure of allegiance.
My Father, thank you for the opportunity to once again meet in person, able to see the faces of our council members, our department has our attorney, and the public that is here. Thank you, my Father, for watching over us and taking care of us. I pray that you be with us as we conduct business for the city, that we make the best decisions for the city and for our residents, in Jesus' name I pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we're going to go to presentations and proclamations, and it's a presentation and discussion on Texas's 87th legislative bills related to municipalities.
Mayor and city council members, I honor you to serve as your city attorney by standing in front of the stand by the corner of the aisle. Today, I'm going to take 7,000 bills that have been filed with the Texas Legislature, actually 6,918 to be exact. We're just going to condense them all into a quick five-minute presentation so that you can be aware of some of the bills that have been filed that will impact not only our local government, but the way we actually kind of function as a municipality. Are you ready to get started? It is the 87th, 77th in Texas Legislature session. As you know, they meet every other year. Can you believe that we are already so far in that we only have 78 days left in this legislative session? Things are moving fast. So, we'll take a look. The bill filing deadline was on March the 12th, which is just this past Friday. And like I said, there are 6,918 bills that have been filed. That's actually, believe it or not, 9% less than the last legislative session that went by. So, I think the severe winter weather may have caused some delays, or may have disrupted some things. It's interesting that there's always been an increase in these past legislative sessions, actually a decrease. So, with only 78 days left, we're pretty sure there's going to be a lot of special sessions to come. How many? We don't know, but sure being, we've spent so much time on some of this severe weather which is out here that we won't have special sessions. Now, some of the big issues that we expected the Texas Legislature to talk about this session, when of course, budget, redistricting, which happens every 10 years with the census. Census numbers still aren't completely out yet. They don't expect those numbers to be out until September.
Oh, boy, now you're going to be like a megaphone.
Different.
I was the drum major, the head drum major for the Gregory Portland High School Band, for two years, actually, so I know how to scream. Just ask Burl. I know how to scream. All right, so, redistricting is important. The census numbers are not going to be out probably till September, so who knows how far this special session's going to come out. Disaster authority, that's going to be interesting. We'll talk about that in a little bit more. And of course, ERCOT reform. As we talk about some of the legislative bills, I want you to actually think about who we are here as we talk about this. And this is a locality, a municipality, a political subdivision. We have a city council, and it's important for us as a city council to be important and tuned in to what our local control and needs are. What our needs are here in Aransas Pass clearly are not what they would be in Lubbock, Texas, right? It's the mere purpose why city councils exist. And so, I want you to remember that as we talk about some of the bills that are being introduced, and how that local control may be impacted if these bills are passed. The governor came out and said that some of his priorities were election integrity, we all know why, right? Civil protections for businesses for those who may be sued for the COVID-19 pandemic. He wants to be able to punish cities that defund police. I will tell you, that one concerns me a little bit, and I'm going to tell you why. It's not about whether you defund police or not, it's actually the ramifications of what happens if you defund the police. Some of the bills that have been passed is if a city defunds the police, which means decreases the budget for the police department, the actual penalty for that would be withdrawal of sales tax, withdrawal of grants, or even a withdrawal of revenue caps. So, some serious repercussions. Had nothing to do with whether or why you wanted to fund the police, but the actual removal of the local control would be significant. As you've seen, you've probably heard some talk of the governor taking over the City of Austin's police department, right? Because they crazily reduced the police department's budget by one-third, which is absurd. But now, you've got the state wanting to come over and take over the police department as opposed to the municipality handling it. So, there needs to be some kind of balance among that if you want to maintain your municipal control. Who knew that broadband deployment would be so important, right? We had so many cities in our state that were impacted by the severe winter weather, and of course, COVID-19, that the governor wants to really focus in on making sure that we get broadband to our cities in Texas. Not every city has that, believe it or not, and we need to make that a priority. ERCOT reforms was definitely something he had as a priority. What I find really interesting, just as ERCOT reforms, is while they're busy trying to figure out who to blame, right, for the problem, what some of the most recent hearings have been in the Texas House and Senate has been who made the money from it because of the supply demand and the increase in the gas and in the energy when there was supply available. It's going to be interesting to see what that happens. Spent, again, several days on that so that it's pushing everything forward into the future with these special sessions. Let's take a look at what the Texas Municipal League says are their priorities. Of course, broadband development is. Open meetings, one of the interesting things that the Texas Municipal League said, and that's the organization, right, that has about 1,900 municipal organizations attached to it, and Texas Municipal League has its own lobbyists, actually several of them, that help represent and protect municipal control and powers. Well, TML said that the open meetings and the virtual meetings were such a success, they felt that more people were able to participate than normal, and they want to, according to this bill, continue that, so that all meetings would become virtual, meaning the public could participate virtually without having to be present. So, we'll see what happens with that one. There is a bill about annexation, and this is just a little bit more authority that would allow someone who wants to voluntarily annex in to be able to annex in even if though there is a neighboring highway or street that's not part of the city that belongs to Texas. Does that make sense? So, that's a cover-up. Maybe it's an opening to try to get more annexation powers back. Of course, you know, those annexation powers remove the powers from cities to annex unless they're voluntary. Street maintenance sales tax, you guys are probably familiar with that. It's actually a tax that is collected from the sales tax that can go to street maintenance. It is authorized to be used if the voters elect it to be used that way. This actual bill would allow that the sales tax has to be approved every four years, but this bill says that it's been approved the first four years, and approved the second four years, and the remaining years could be eight to 10 years as opposed to every four years. Newspaper notices, I know our city secretary is going to be interested in this one. This is a bill that would actually eliminate having to post notices in the newspaper if they have a contract and agreement with a third-party internet service provider. So, somebody's out there going to inherit service provider that's trying to make money off that, right? So, interesting. I'm concerned about what that might do to our local newspapers. The next slide is probably the biggest, most important thing of all that I need for all of you to completely pay attention to, and it's community censorship. That's what they're calling it, community censorship. This would prohibit, this bill would prohibit political subdivisions, which includes cities, counties, school boards, from lobbying or participating in an organization, such as a chamber, who may lobby. That's huge. That bill passed, almost entirely passed last legislative session. It got knocked down on a split decision on the floor. It was extremely highly political. This legislative session, this bill will pass the House. It may pass the Senate.
So, what's the rationale behind that?
It's a removal of Texas cities or counties and school boards to be able to lobby the state for their interest, or for their own interests.
Let us speak their voice.
Well said, Mayor. This is not pretend. This is for real, and it for real almost passed legislative session, and I'm telling you, it will almost pass this legislative session again. And so, if there's anything that you want to become involved with, voice your opinion on with your state senators or your state legislatures, it is this particular community censorship. TML, Texas Municipal League, has an "Our Home, Our Decisions" campaign. They started that last year. They've also pushing out more information about this bill being sponsored yet again this year on other websites. So, please, if you want more information about that, please let me know. I cannot emphasize that enough.
Do you know the, what House bill number is that?
I will get that for you. I didn't put it on here, but I have it. In fact-
Our Home, Our what?
Our Home, Our Decisions. And it's House Bill 749. The state representative that's sponsoring that is Middleton. And there's a companion bill in the Senate, Senate Bill 234, that's by Hall. The relationships, as you know, here in the City of Aransas Pass, especially with our chamber, are extremely important, and the impact that state legislation may have on that is significant. Public Information Act, there's a possibility that cities are going to be required to put every single contract that they enter into on their website. There's also something that's been filed that the governor has called the Texas Pandemic Response Act. This is another one. That's very interesting. It's pulling away municipal control. Okay, so let me see if I can explain this. They're going to create a whole new chapter in state law under the Local Government Code, and they're going to have a difference between what's a pandemic versus what's a local disaster. So, it would be the difference between a COVID-19 health pandemic, right, that may be all over the state, versus a local disaster which may be regional or hurricane-like. Does that make sense? And so, it would give complete control over, to the governor, to have orders over a pandemic, so that you would no longer see varying orders from different mayors around the state. Remember that whole battle between the mayor and the governor and which order, or is it the county judge, which one is superseding each other? So, the cleanup makes sense, right, to give the authority to the governor, but that's one person, and the needs of what happens in Lubbock, Texas, are not the needs of Aransas Pass. I'm also concerned that this may be unintended consequences. To have more uniformity takes away the local control, so please, open your minds up to what the impact of that might be. Elections, here's a bill. If you have elections in May, you may be able to move them to November permanently. And then, this one's actually going to really pique your interest. There is a bill that would require council members to be partisan. You would have to pick a party to run.
Certainly a better interest in a large city, rather than in a smaller city.
Yeah, not in a small city.
The bill doesn't differentiate on size yet. It might as it begins to get negotiated. So, these are some of the ones that I think you should know about that would have extreme impact on you. Involving the port of Corpus Christi, which I know is interesting for you. There are three bills that have been filed. Two of them are, one's in the House and one's in the Senate, they're companion bills, and that is just changing the makeup of the port of Corpus Christi. It would allow the City of Corpus Christi to appoint three members, and the County of San Patricio to appoint two members. Right now, it's three to one, and so they're wanting to get an extra seat to be three to two. So, there's two out of the three bills. The third bill is filed by Hinaosa, and he is wanting for the State of Texas to be able to sell certain real property that is defined by meets and bounds, so it's not a clear legal description. I think- I think it's in the Rincon Canal, from what I can tell. But he wants the state of Texas to be able to sell this property directly to the Port of Corpus Christi at fair market value. So I think it's important for us to figure out what property that is. I just need someone to help me with that because I don't understand all those degrees. If anyone wants to help with that, please let me know.
He's saying he's right on that, Cory.
Great. Burl always has me. All right, so this is a real quick, short summary. You can literally spend hours on what the bills have been filed. I have provided a copy of the handout of some of the most recent newsletter issued by TML on these bills, if you want more information on them. What is actually filed, it will not be what it looks like at the end of the day, at least not even in the last five minutes of passage, and it certainly may not look the same if it gets to the governor's desk. So anything of interest that I can answer for you, please, I would love to see the city of Aransas Pass involved with these legislative concerns, especially the unintended consequences of removing powers from you that may be in the namesake of something really good that you could follow through on. Does that make sense? Any questions? Anybody excited about anything? Thank you. I'll continue to keep you updated as more things come through. You want to call the next speaker?
Okay, now we're going to go to City Tree Trunk Removal Project. Ms. Roxanne Pies.
T2, remember this? Okay, so you were so excited about the demolitions, and those just keep coming through. We got three of them closed out today. Yay for the demo team. In fact, I always recognize the demo team after a presentation, but I think tonight, we should recognize them first, don't you think? We all know the grouchy Burl, who always serves an important purpose as our billing official with so many certifications, right, Burl? Let's all give it a round of applause for Burl. And of course, you know Cory. You've met Tito, who this project was named after. Tito for T2. Yay, Tito. And you know that this was his project in particular. But what I really want you to know is who the brains and the beauty is behind this whole project. It's Renee, also lovingly referred to as Nay-Nay by me. Can we give it a round for Renee? Is our permit tech in the city, and she works with our demolition team. She somehow keeps us all under control and makes picture our Ts are dotted. No, our Ts are crossed, and our Is are dotted. That's the kind of thing I mean. All right, so tree trunk removal. So Councilmember Brago, just like each one of you, drive me around town and point out, what about this? What about this? What about this? And I am rapidly running so fast to try to keep up with your wants and your demands. Councilmember Brago took me around one town one day and said, why are all these tree trunks out in our yards? Well, I don't know what the answer was. But T2 developed a project by which we could address that, and the purpose of today's presentation is to update you on what has happened. So let's take a look. We had nine properties we identified. And when I say tree trunks, I don't mean like a small thing. I mean like a huge tree trunk. Some of them as large as the bar up there, it was huge. All right, let's take a look at before and after pictures. I couldn't help but put it on the entire screen. Here's the before, 1,006 North Commercial Humongolius. Tito sent out that notice letter with Renee, and you know what? That day, no, I take it back. Within two days, that resident responded, and here's our after. Let's move on to the next one. This one's 1345 North Commercial. That day, the same day they got the notice, this is the one, they did this after. Gone. Well, those were pretty big chunks to move. But if you take a look at the before of 345 South 12th, that was big, and the people didn't have that much money. But you know where there's a will, there's a way. And so they started cutting it up into small pieces. Check a little way, a little bit at a time, and now you can see your after. Moving on to 148 South Rife. Still the same situation. What do we do? Well, you just start, and you take a little bit at a time. And this is what it looks like after a while. I think we could have built a whole house on this wood. Moving on to just down the street, 150 South Rife. Same scenario, just a little bit at a time. Isn't that nice? Thank you, Tito and Renee, for working on that. It made a big difference in our streets. There are still, though, there's still three more. Or four more, I'm sorry. Let's take a look at 241 South Saunders. Property owner's like, there's no way I can move this. It's okay, just start. But it's going to take me a while, okay? Let's start. So here's the work in progress. And we hope to bring that with the completed projects in. Moving on to 645 South McCambeau. No dice there, no money. No convincing yet to be able to remove it. It's okay. We'll keep knocking on that, and we'll work on it. Let's try 429 South Saunders. There's more than just a tree trunk on this property. If we take a look at the next one, it's actually a really bad structure that was foreclosed on, and the lien holder purchased it and thinks it may be a viable property. And so it is on the demo docket for us to deal with. Some more to come on that one. And then the next property is 134 West Wheeler. That too is more than just a tree trunk. We're dealing with that property on the demo docket as well. Take a look at our last slide. That's just the tree trunks that were all over town. I can't tell you why. We don't really know, but most of them are gone now. And we'll continue to work on them. I hope that you at least recognize this as progress. Progress that was made not only during Christmas, or New Years, but progress that was also made during the severe winter weather. So again, thank you, Tito and Renee.
Well, thank you, Roxanne.
Thank you. For both those reports.
Thank you, guys. Okay, now we're going to go to Board and Commission Appointments and as for the Building Board of Standards and Appeals.
This board has, there's three vacancies on this board. Well, there's three, there's some reappointments. Terms expire for Dan Moore. He filled the category of Realtor, Ruben Rodriguez, Engineer, and Michael Moore, Commercial Business Owner. Mr. Myron Schroeder has submitted an application for the engineer slot. So there's three appointments.
Okay, Mary. Isn't one of those properties on a list that we're dealing with? That property owner on a list that we're dealing with? Roxanne? The middle name? Without saying very much, isn't that a property that we're trying to deal with that person?
There is a board member currently on the Building Standards and Boards of Appeals that owns a piece of property that we have been working on with the demo docket. It is being, in the process of being repaired at a slow rate.
But it's been, we've been dealing with it for a while, if I remember correctly. Okay. So I would, I personally would prefer that that person does not get back onto the building, BBSA. I don't believe it's a good representation for our city.
I make a motion to appoint Myron Schroeder to the Building Boards of Standards and Appeals.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we have two other reappointments.
Oh, and I also move to approve Dan Moore and Michael Moore.
And just for the record, none of those that you've mentioned are the property owners that have a standard structure. I don't want them, none of the ones you've requested to be appointed have one like that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need to abstain because it likes being.
I'll note that.
Okay, now we're going to go to the Consent Agenda. All of the following items on the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless the council members have requests. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately.
I make a motion to approve the special meeting of February 22nd, regular meeting of March 1st, and special meeting March 9th. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we're going to go to City Manager, which is Consider An Act on Improvement Resolution Number 2021-964, suspending the May 3, 2021 effective date of the proposal by Centerpoint Energy Resources Corporation, DBA Centerpoint Energy in Texas, and Centerpoint Energy Texas Gas, South Texas Division, to implement interim GRIP rate adjustments for gas utility investments in 2020 and require delivery of the resolution to the company and legal counsel.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, this is an issue that came up last year, actually. And as a representative in the audience, Ron Chaney from the Centerpoint. And if you approve this, it's simply a matter, as I understand it, there'll be a delay of 45 days of a rate increase that's going to occur anyway. Ron, are you out there? And you can add some more explanation to it if you would.
So this is our second GRIP session. I don't know how long, you know, you guys have been on the council, but how deep we want to get into this thing. But essentially, it's, this is, just like it says, bit harsh, though. But it allows the Centerpoint Energy to make these interim rate increases based on our capital rehabilitation of our system. So as you guys have seen throughout, low-pressure system over here, how many miles of that did we just replace these last few years? And this is exactly what that's for. And we're a regulated gas company. We don't get to, you know, run our profits up. And so, but we do have a right to, you know, earn, you know, our regulated rate. And so whenever we make these improvements to our system, or, you know, basically, it's, number one, is to provide a reliable source of natural gas. Number two, it's to make sure our system is safe. You guys know, you got an old community here. And so, you know, you've just gone through Harvey, you know, with the water lines. You're always, have infrastructure issues. We're a partner in your easements and your right-of-ways as well within here. So this is all it is, okay? We have to have a rate case prior to this to ensure that our rates are just and fair by the Rural Commission. I'm not sure if you guys remember, one of the coalitions of lawyers, there's like three or four groups of them. And so they, you know, they're the ones that probably sent you the resolution originally, which is fine. And so it gives, again, we had to have a rate case, at which point we opt in for the GRIP program, and it's a statewide thing. All gas utilities have the opportunity. But when you do, we have to do a filing, a script filing, every year for five and a half years, okay? So, and then at which point, we have to have a rate case. So all these interims, and it's true, that goes through the Rural Commission, we file it with them as well. So they scrutinize this as well. And then at the fifth year, then, we have our last one, and then on this, like the sixth year, we have a full-blown rate case. Which all of these, if they're justifiable or whatever, last time, I think Rural Commission actually dropped the rates down. I think it was 2017, we actually had the rate case and made some changes to it. So anyway, that's what the GRIP is. You guys have been beneficiary of this dollars. I can assure you that the improvements that we just made to our low-pressure system here in town, we got rid of it. We replaced it, was a huge reason why we, y'all had plenty of gas here three weeks ago. And so it's a very worthwhile thing. So you can suspend it, take no action, approve it. Don't matter to me. We just need to know how to file the rates to make sure our folks in town and our customers are properly billed. Any question?
You're quite welcome. Look forward to meeting you guys. I'm the new guy.
So again, all you can do is delay it for 45 days. It is going to happen. So that's the action for you. Last year, I actually forgot what we did last year. But it simply would be a delay if you decide to go there.
It's better to suspend it or just delay it?
It's safer.
Let's just wait. All in favor?
Aye.
Now we're going to go to Consider An Act on Ordinance Number 2021-4343, Extending a Local State of Disaster Declaration Due to a Public Health Emergency for 90 calendar days from effective date of ordinance.
That's pretty self-explanatory, the way the mayor just read it. And I believe, Mayor, I believe the last one was 90 days. Is that correct?
Yes, we've been doing them in 90-day increments.
So it's simply an extension of that.
I make a motion to extend a local state of disaster declaration due to a public health emergency for 90 calendar days from effective date of ordinance.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we're going to go to the Monthly Municipal Court Report from February 2021.
I believe that's submitted to you.
Okay, now we're going to go to Development Services. Just Consider An Act on Awarding Request for Proposal for Repair to Clarifier Number One at the wastewater treatment plant to repair its services group, including alternative bid for an amount not to exceed $123,810.
The 8-1 and 8-2, Nikki, if you want to go on. 8-1 and 8-2 are, those bids were opened at the same time, several days ago. Last week, I think it was, actually. And one is being accepted, the other is suggested. Are you rejecting them? Nikki, can you tell us why?
As y'all may know, we already had one of our clarifiers rehabilitated. We are getting real close to finalizing that project. However, we do have a second clarifier on our wastewater treatment plant that has not been touched since 1984. We did receive these bids. This bid of $123,810 is nearly $50,000 under what we projected the budget to, or what we projected the project to be. So it is a savings, and it is going to be very vital to the function of the wastewater treatment plant. The reason for the rejection on the, can I go to that, or are we?
Yes.
Okay. The considering of the rejecting of the bids for the digester cleanup is because it was well over our budget. But we had a lot of attentions from a lot of local vendors that we don't feel had enough time to maybe possibly put in a competitive bid. So we would like to turn away the bids that we did receive, which are from outsourced companies out of state. And we would like our local companies to have possibly another chance at putting in a competitive bid.
Mayor, before we discuss this second item, can we take a vote on the first one, on the clarifier?
Any questions on the first clarifier?
I make a motion to approve the request for proposals to repair its services group for the clarifier for $123,810.
Is that to accept the?
Yes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we're going to go to Consider An Act on Rejecting. Now, we're gonna go to consider an act on rejecting the bids received for repairs to the digestive cleanout at the wastewater treatment plant and re-advertise.
I make a motion that we decline all bids we've brought, or we do.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, we're gonna go to consider an act on issuance of a request for proposals for utility extensions to the new Motel 6.
Let me go ahead and start this, Mayor. This has been going on for about 300 years, I think.
301.
But it is moving forward, and you go out there and you'll see construction, now they're on the second story, it is moving forward finally. We have an agreement when this first started to pay for the utilities, to bring the utilities to the property line, and this is allowing us to begin the work related to that. I know Mickey's been involved with it, Fernando's been involved with it, and good old Burl over there has worked with us many, many hours on this particular project. It is moving forward because of the diligence of your staff members, and we greatly appreciate that. So this allows us to begin the process, the paperwork process of moving forward with the construction of that, of that line. Anything to add to that, Mickey?
You better wrap it up.
So the utilities are already at the Fairfield end, is that where they stop?
That's correct.
So, that, how many feet is that, not?
I'm not sure off the top of my head, but it's not too far.
They're about a, up to 300 feet.
300?
Okay. I make a motion that we authorize staff to cover the RFP for water and sewer extension to the new Motel 6.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, I'm getting excited about this one. Consider an act on the issuance of request for proposals for staff in McCambe Storm Project, really.
This is a big one. As way of explanation, the reason it's taken a while is because of the environmental clearances that we needed from the state, and as you know, when dealing with the state and environmental issues, as we well know, it takes a long time. So this is part of that $10 million project, and once this work starts, and the other 15, probably 15 projects that's gonna be tied to that, they can just move along rapidly also. The big one is this one here, and we're asking your approval to move forward with the issuance of the proposals for Stat McCambe Storm Project. Anything to add to that?
No, like Gary mentioned, it is one of 15 projects, however, this is blatantly the most obvious and important one, so this will be spearheading it. Once we do get motion starting with this one, the next ones will follow soon, very shortly after.
I make a motion that we authorize staff to cover the RFP for repair to Stat McCambe Storm Water Extension.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're gonna go to consider an act on approving change order number one to the contract with Dunn Services Incorporated for the Harbor Master Building Office to add 55 days to the contract.
Your call cannot be concluded.
There is no cost for the, for this change order. Yeah, there is.
Okay, let's talk about that for a second. Correct, as far as saying attaching a certain amount of money to that, that is correct. Burl and Roxanne and I were talking today, and Mickey is well aware of this, there is a potential for liquidated damages, and the further out you give approval, then the less of a chance for liquidated damages. So, and that's just my opinion, and Mickey may have some other thoughts on that, and we're asking someone from L&amp;V to get on the line.
Can we try again?
Okay. And they can further explain it also. Mickey's been doing additional research, but there is that issue that I just mentioned, as far as the time associated with that and the potential, or lack of potential, if you make enough days for liquidated damages. A big issue, I would think, is do they finish on time? And Mickey, you wanna take it from there? Do they finish on time or not, or what have you, what do you understand?
I have spoken to L&amp;V, I have not spoken to the contractor. According to L&amp;V, he has multiple reports that he did send to me about the delays that they experienced, the manufacturer Red Dot experienced. Some as far as delays, not sending the right amount of equipment, sending the wrong, wrong equipment that actually needed to be sent back and refabricated due to its structural According to L&amp;V, the contractor still is on track of completing it on time, so the reason behind the extension due to the Red Dot delays, that is not up for me to defend, that is up to L&amp;V and the contractor. Over 15 of those 55, 15 of those 55 days are due to bad weather delays, which we all know we can't control those. So, as far, as far as my knowledge, the only thing that I can be certain of is the bad weather days delay. As far as the manufacturer's delays from Red Dot, that's, that's for them to defend.
I don't know. Giving them the extension is just saving them some money, because I think they're a little scared of not finishing job, and we come back and charge them for it. Even from the start, from the very start, they actually dragged their feet, thinking they had plenty of time, somebody dropped the ball in ordering the actual building itself, they even let the form sit out there for over 30, 90 days, or whatever amount of time it was, and I don't think they deserve no time, they oughta pay their penalty for not getting it done on time.
Well, it shouldn't be a non-issue if they're gonna finish on time, so.
Yes, and the thing about it is, it's L&amp;V we're talking about, how you doing? I don't trust them at all. I'll tell you the truth.
Tell it like it is.
What is the building supposed to be completed?
That, I'm not positive on the date.
I thought it said March 29th somewhere.
I believe so, yes. I think that's when, that's the substantial completion date, yes.
So they're asking for, for 55 days from March 29th?
From the due date of their contract, I believe so, yes. Which is 15 days bad weather and 40 days due to delays from Red Dot manufacturing.
No, I can, I can see, I'm sorry, I can see extending for 15 days for the bad weather.
Correct.
They have no control over that, regardless of, they're giving all the building any time, you know, I can see being fair and giving them these 15 days extended for an additional 50 because of bad weather. We have to be fair about it, you know.
And that's being nice.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I just think it's.
Straight up.
I mean, you would, you would do that to anyone, regardless of if you're in building, you know, you have to recognize that. So I would say, I would say just give them 15 days for the bad weather to extend it.
Didn't I just hear Ram say that they delayed in getting started from the first day?
But to me, just, bad weather will come, whether they ordered it on time or not, bad weather's still gonna be there.
But if they would've started on day one, they wouldn't be.
We wouldn't be in this situation. It, it's the fact that they really got the job, and they, they got the job, and they really actually had not ordered the building itself. Once they got the job, I think they should've been smart enough to be, to order the building, not wait till after, whatever the reason why they used of not ordering the building, and then blaming this person, that person, of why it didn't get ordered or whatnot. The fact of the matter is that they need to get used to, they get a job with the city of around this past, we need to finish it on time, and we can't, no, 15 days, I'm okay with. All right, but, after that, they have plenty of time, and, I don't know.
I just wanna make sure that whoever is overseeing your.
L&amp;V.
Your project is not permitting them to cut corners to finish it on time.
Correct.
That is just my concern also, that we, that we do also have our engineer and keep a close eye, or city staff or whoever, just to keep eye that they're not, you know, just as long as it kind of gets together, okay, well.
Yes, ma'am.
As long as it needs, just paint it.
I, I had a very lengthy conversation with Fernando, both of, both he and I were in agreeance that it would only be fair due to the, the weather, as far as the 40 additional days. On the other hand, that's up to L&amp;V and the contractor to defend, and nobody is here to defend them on their case.
Okay, and how, how many people got fired because they got hired to lead the job, and they were not good enough to be able to do that? One, two, how many?
I have no idea.
For sure one, that I know of.
I make a motion that we write an additional 50 days bad, rated bad weather days, the original completion date.
Is your second?
I would've kind of split that in half, because every contractor puts in bad weather when we built the barn, we had a, we had a date of completion, and they had so many days, just like school systems give snow days, and right, you know.
Absolutely.
So I'm not good with the 15 days, I would, I'm, I'm not gonna vote for the 15 days. I give them a week.
Was there, was there a second out?
No, there's, there's no second out there.
So the motion dies for lack of second.
Is there another motion?
Yeah.
What happens in the building?
So, do we, I think we reject that motion?
I make a motion that we reject the change order number one for the Harbor Master Building.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're, even though they put it to where it's no cost to the city, but it might be a loss to the city if they don't finish.
I did hear that, I'm sorry.
Okay, now, we're gonna go to monthly public works report. I think we got that?
You should have that, yes.
And then the monthly building department report, which we got that.
Yeah, you have that.
And then we're gonna go to the finance, which is a monthly finance department report, which we got that one also.
Yes, just wanna point out briefly on that, that sales tax still is doing well, and the finance director acknowledges that. Not all cities can say that, but we can say that it's doing well, and through COVID, it's done well, so just wanna make you aware of that.
Okay, now, we're gonna go to public safety, which is consider an act on approving the police chief to enter into a contract for the purchase of lab-related supplies for policing from the Texas Department of Public Safety General Stores.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. This item is simply to allow us to purchase, collection, evidence collection material from the Department of Public Safety General Stores as needed for like DWIs, DNA specimens, and stuff of that nature. It is really new to us, I don't know why they're requiring this, we've been purchasing stuff from them, which is necessary for some time now.
And this is the only company that we can buy from, if I read correctly.
For, for certain kits, yes, this is the only company we can buy for. If you approve this agreement, there are other items we can also purchase from them if ever the need arises, like gunshot residue kit, stuff of that nature. We currently can get those elsewhere. It's not very proprietary like these blood draw kits are.
I make a motion that we require the police chief to enter into a contract for the purchase of lab-related supplies for policing, for leasing from the Texas Department of Public Safety General Stores.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're gonna go to the monthly public safety report, which is.
It's there.
Is there, and then we're gonna go to the monthly fire department report.
I think they wanna talk.
Nathan?
Yes, no?
It's all submitted.
Okay, it's submitted.
Okay, is it, okay, we're good. Then we're gonna go to city council or staff announcements, which is a special council meeting, annual audit report.
The date is not yet set, we just wanna let you know that it's coming as soon as possible, and don't know if we wanna add any other agenda items to that, but at least there will be that item, and so that's all there is on that particular item. If I may go to the next one, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. This is, and Jose is here to give you a report, and I believe a PowerPoint also, so I mean, I could pull it up, and on what's been happening with the Texas Community Watershed Partners. I've been sitting in on some of the meetings, all the meetings since I've been here, and a lot of good stuff's coming out of that, and Jose can report to you on exactly what that means.
Yeah, I guess about, somewhere in December, we were here to talk about this TCWP helping the city to come up with an RV park district, and this is what, over the months, what we have done so far. So the purpose of this project is to make the RV park a separate district from the one which is currently under the MH zoning district. So, since January, we have, we have met, and the first tax that we had was about scoping and background research, and it talked about how to include some of the schedule that we had before us. And so we discussed also the city code and comprehensive plan, and as to how we can revise the comprehensive plan and include some of the RV park regulations into the comprehensive plan. And they are ready to help us regulate some outcomes and some of the inconsistencies with some potential obstacles to the implementation of that district. So, they asked for our zoning map and also our future land use map, and we were able to provide them with those resources for them to review and look at it and see whether there would be a need for an update of the zoning map. Currently, they are also working on the existing locations for RV parks, as well as proposed areas for an RV district within the city limits. And so, we have provided them with GIs data, that our GIs guy, Mark Zines, have, he has connected with them and helping them go through this. They plan to come up with a design, map design of location areas, and areas that may be good for these RV parks, and areas that we may propose as this project goes on to determine where RV park districts will be good for the city. So the second tax was about land use planning considerations. So we looked at, like, as I've said earlier, we looked at the location criteria and the process for facilitating that, and in doing that, we talked about stakeholders within the city to figure out how best we can identify the prescriptive approach for citing these RV parks within city limits. And so, we are helping TCWP to come up with a group, to have a group discussion and workshops that will come together and come up with a design system that will help facilitate So, part of the process is that we are looking a little bit into detail the permitting process and also code enforcement facilitations. And so, they are looking at the current zoning codes and related documents, which will help the appropriate approaches to RV park permitting and approval process of, and also the code enforcement. We have projected that we're going to have some potential meeting with stakeholders and also get with some other RV park developers in terms of outreach programs to figure out how best we can coordinate with them to come up with a good RV park system and also the location where this will be good for the city. We are also looking at certain tax and that will help prepare a memo which will give us a summary of how these discussions and outcomes of these tax will be taking place. So the task three, we're going to look at the ordinance approaches and alternatives that we have. So based on the feedback from tax two, the TCWP will identify potential approaches to rewriting the city's RV regulations and look at the pros and cons. Examples of approaches that could include a declaration of new zoning district and also improve performance standards and or even create a conditional use permit provisions in the existing zoning district that relates to creating an RV park district on its own. So TCWP will facilitate this discussion with the city's stakeholders to determine the proper ways of rewriting this process. So we have the ordinance outline and organization and they're going to prepare all these processes, including the model ordinance, which the city has established already. So they're going to follow that process. They have noted that they are not going to provide legal services, so it's up to the city to provide legal services and go through all these documents. So just to go a little bit deeper and quick flow between how this meeting format will be. There are some questions that TCWP has requested that they would like to ask to get good answers in order to be able to prepare this legal document. And so some of them is, besides having the focus groups, which will comprise of the project team, that is city staff and TCWP, we have some, we've selected about four members of the Planning and Zoning Commission to represent and some RV, RV park owners and developers. So they are going to be the team that's going to sit down to discuss all this. And maximum meeting time will be about an hour and a half. And so there's going to be an in-depth discussion of the topics to ensure all participants have a shared understanding. For the land use and location, some of the questions will be that what makes a location attractive for RV park development? And also, how should RV parks be cited and designed in relation to major corridors? The, for instance, the proximity to water, water a draw for RV parks? And if so, what are the important flood management considerations that can be put in place? Also, we look at some of the concerns about locating RV parks near residential areas and how can this be mitigated? For the city, it is the current zoning's application to areas within the ETJ acceptable? Or should or could it be, could it include a larger area? When it comes to design standards, we're going to look at the setbacks, whether they are appropriate strategy for preserving commercial frontage on major corridors. So based on prior discussions, what are the types of flat plain design standards that should be improved? For instance, flood warning systems, restrictions on development of the SFHA long-term state and current requirements in terms of hazards? And a question like, are current drainage requirements adequate? And how could they be improved? Another question that may come up will be that are their current buffering, screening and landscaping requirements that are adequate? And how could this be improved? What we have also noted is see if we can provide incentives that will encourage developers of RV parks to be able to come up with good design standards, such as tax credits and stuff like that. So this is what we are looking at. Thank you.
Jose, I heard you, I heard you talk about where RV parks could be built. I thought it was fairly clear when we all met those two times, we did not.
Right.
Any RV parks on the full entrances to our city. It was very valuable property and we were not interested. Is that still in? I'd love to get a copy of that PowerPoint.
Okay.
That I could really read through it and stuff, but I think that, I don't know about everybody else, but that was something that we were very strong on.
Right. Yeah, we have noted that entrances to the city are very critical that we need to look at in certain major streets within the city.
Correct.
Yeah, so we are looking at all of that. And this will come up during the workshop.
Okay, and you're working with the police and fire department for the safety issues of lighting and street wits and stuff like that.
Yeah, we will look at all of that.
So when is this meeting going to take place?
Yeah, it will.
It's not March the fifteenth, so.
It's, it's on the eighteenth. So can you go to the next?
Right there, March fifteenth. Is it going to be tomorrow?
Eighteenth.
The eighteenth.
Yeah. We have a scheduled line, outline. Okay, so this coming February eighteenth, we'll discuss the future land use and location criteria and if desired, this stakeholder engagement with RV parks owners and develop, developers. So that's what we're going to look at. And then we will look at also the discussion of design standards.
Thanks. Thank you, Jen. We can have Americans provide us comments to the council members. I think that would be good for all of us down there.
Yeah, I will do that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thanks.
Okay, now we're going to go to citizen comments. Citizen comments are intended for the matters that are not scheduled on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name and address for the record. Be advised that the Texas Open Meeting Act prohibits the city council from responding and discussing your comments. The law authorizes the following. Make a statement of factual information, recite existing policy, advise that this subject may be placed on the agenda for a subsequent meeting. And I think Eric wants to be the first citizen comment.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. We didn't really have an air it placed for the agenda, but from talking to Gary, we wanted to give you all an update as it relates to the fire that is so well-known on Bay Street from over the weekend. Two homes that were lost in that fire. And first, I want to point out that the response from the fire department communications, I've reviewed all of that, listened to all of that. I've talked with the fire chief, the assistant fire chief, as well as the captain that responded during that event. We see no wrongdoing, nothing that could have been done differently. They actually exercised great judgment and the cooperation between our mutual aid agreements from the surrounding agencies that participated worked perfectly. Some of the things that have come up that I need to speak to that came up online is why were other ladder trucks there that were being used and our ladder truck was not? There were three other ladder trucks that were used. All were elevated and used to combat this fire. And I will tell you that when our captain determined, he was out on a crash call, a medical call on a crash, and they got this dispatch. And when he determined to respond to this patio fire, it was a decision that he made to suit up, respond immediately and try to suppress the fire with the most water that they had available, which engine one carries four times the amount of water than the ladder truck. One decision. The other thing was the ladder cannot elevate until the power lines that were immediately in front of this structure are disabled. So they had to notify A E P and they had to deactivate those power lines before the ladder could elevate. And just so folks know, the reason I'm talking, the chief here to back me up, I'm at the 50,000-foot level in discussing this, he can talk at the more of the ground level, but I am the public safety director and I engaged this communication immediately after we saw that there needed to be a response publicly. So again, the ladder truck can't elevate till the power lines are disabled. That would have also hindered our ability on that first attack. That first attack, from as I've been informed by the professionals, is most crucial while they secure a continuous water line to feed all the responding units. There's a comment, why wasn't the fire hydrant working on Bay Street? The fire hydrant was working. They used that fire hydrant. The fire hydrant had a work order that was placed on it to public works this past January when they inspected it. They actually were in that neighborhood inspecting those hydrants during that time. The work order wasn't because it was not working, it was because the five-inch cap would not come off. And my officers have actually been with the fire department when they've bent a wrench trying to pull a cap off. So that's why they weren't able to get that five-inch cap off. They sent it in for a work order to be fixed. Fortunately, this night, we had the help of a Good Samaritan neighbor and that individual was able to help the fire crews, however they were, to get that cap off. And that's the hydrant that they did use. Why does it take so long for the fire department to respond? This was another question online. And I reviewed the time from the time of dispatch to the time of going on scene. And I also listened to all the radio, the three-nine-one-one calls related and all that information as it was flowing. And I do not see that any of that response time, ten minutes, is not unreasonable. They have to suit up. They're driving a large apparatus that is not as speedy as a cop car. It takes time to navigate to the location. More recently, there's been some suggestions of returning to volunteer service or maybe even a combined service between volunteers and full-time. If you do recall, council, we had volunteers when, even after I started here. And the reliability is somewhat difficult. Now, I know that if you look at our neighboring agencies, Rockport and Ingleside, who did respond and help us, they have volunteer services and their volunteer services are well-built out, they're well-established and managed, and they work, obviously, as we all see. We do not feel at this time that the volunteer service is the way to go. And when we disbanded our service, if you recall, we did so while even arresting one of the volunteers for stealing, I think around $25,000 to fund his wedding. So it was just not being managed well at that time, but it also was not under the directorship of Mr. Kelly and his, his team right now. So another thing that has come up, and this is purely commentary, and we've discussed this with you all before, and that is a fireboat, the idea of getting a fireboat. Now, I talked to one of the fire investigators because Kelly solicited the service of the San Patricia County Fire Marshal in order to have a neutral third-party look at this fire and look at our responses and everything. And he gave us a clean bill of health and he helped Kelly's team determine the cause of that fire. I asked him, I said, would a fireboat have made a difference? He said, wholeheartedly, it would have made a difference in this situation because one observation was while one of the elevated ladder was blowing water onto one of the structures, the wind, which was gusting up to 25 miles per hour during this event, was blowing that water away from the fire. The fireboat would have been producing an endless supply of water from the Gulf area there, the bay, but it also would have been blowing with the wind and would have made it to the fire and would have been a crucial help. We might not have had the second, second structure burned down, which was right next door. So a fireboat is something to also keep in consideration. But let's move on. Speaking of getting a fireboat potentially, that is not a priority. As this council, many of you know, for the last two or three budgeting cycles, and even Sander knows, the fire chief, current fire chief, has presented the idea of beefing up staff, six firefighters on shift and getting, getting a ladder truck. Now, part of the ladder truck was to consider the addition of staff. So we kind of had to go with what was more financially feasible at that time, and that was, let's get the ladder going. We can still utilize the ladder as necessary. And then we will continue to work towards adding that fire staff to supplement the ladder, one, and to give us a second company. Now, when I say company, I mean, in this situation, had we had our six firefighters, the first crew would have responded in engine one, the second crew could have responded with the ladder truck, secured the water line for our teams, and then we would have had our ladder on location, operating with engine one. Now, what are we doing with those firefighters when they're not going out fighting fire? Great question. We do medical first response, which probably consumes a lot of our time. So those two firefighters would be providing that medical response, first responder, but not in an engine. They would be doing it in their Ram truck or whatever with a medical bag and doing medical response that way. Chief Kelly has experience with that after having established it where he was prior to here. So this council has already been making these decisions, working towards beefing up our fire response, improving our I S O rating and improving the quality of fire response over the last three budget cycles, at the very least. So this is a continuation of that. This next part, I, I had to write it out because I don't want to go off script, so please just bear with me. And I'm not being critical, but in a way I am being critical. It, it needs to be said. Facebook is a vital resource to those of us, both elected and appointed officials. It's a tool that cuts both ways, like a double-edged sword. Some with the best of intentions, some of the best intentions have the tendency to run afoul. Believe me, I know I've had that experience several times over my eight years here. And some have the tendency to demoralize a group of folks, even though the group was not the intended target of the post. Certain recent posts on Facebook have done just that. In fact, unbeknownst to the poster, like there have been many, there have been many unintended targets directly affected by commentary shared. Several recent Facebook posts, posts of which I mentioned that directly relate to the city, speak to issues that stem from 30-plus years of mismanagement by past city leadership, employees, leadership, all incumbents included. Just over my short eight years of working for the city, I've seen stark change in how we manage the city's public service effort. Reflecting on when I began, our public works crews were greatly lacking. For example, they drove vehicles that were held together from parts from other failed vehicles they had to scrap. It was not uncommon to see a city staffer driving a poorly kept vehicle with a mixed match colored doors because they had to pull scraps off of other vehicles that were limping or they had to pull scraps off of the other vehicles to keep the. limping, or they had to pull scraps off of the other vehicles to keep the limping ones limping along. And I thank you again for when you guys decided to purchase all new vehicles, that was greatly helpful during that time. We were in a very bad place at that time. This situation wasn't isolated to Public Works. The PD and the fire department also suffered from years of mismanagement. One search on Google will reveal that history. Though it only took a few years to turn the police department and the fire department around, it will continue to take many more years to recover from 30-plus years of mismanagement which the city has endured. One need not look far to see the lack of proper management. Just look at this, improper, one need not look so far, excuse me, I'm not good at reading out loud, that's why I try to do impromptu. Just look at the status of the streets like we discussed this evening, North McCambele, look at the drainage issues, anytime it rains across town, we see the flooding. The water service, that's vital to infrastructure, like fire hydrants on Bay Street, we were sucking so much water out of that hydrant because it's a dead-end line that doesn't loop around. We have problems with non-looping lines all across this town that we have to make up the lack for. Much of this, if not all, resulted from poor planning and shoddy leadership that stands further back than all of us on the council and the leadership within this city and Regardless, we, the city staff, have taken on this challenge, and we do so knowing that we are fighting an uphill battle, constantly scrutinized for the mishaps that continue to pop up, and scrutinized for the work that we do. We aren't perfect, and we will continue to make mistakes, but we will likewise continue to provide the utmost of service within our means and with the resources that this council provides. This council and staff must work together as one team with the same end mission in sight. It is imperative today that we, the city, remain team-oriented and focused. We have a significant level of momentum with this current council and staff. We must not lose sight of the progressive efforts concurrently underway. I do not feel we could find better city leadership or directors than we have in place today. We have many coals in the fire, and some of those very issues publicly shared on Facebook are already in focus. None of it's new, and most of it's already being addressed. A little research would go a long way to illustrate that point. Additionally, we must maintain a culture of inspiring our staff to perform and improve, not one that demeans or casts shadow of doubt, mistrust, or misdeed on their efforts. Inspiration was my key in my transformation of public safety services in the police department. And, as I've always preached very publicly, a happy employee will provide a happier good product or service. In my short time within the PD, I've learned that I can accomplish virtually any goal so long as I inspire my staff to achieve it. We, as a city body, must embrace this team-focused ideology. Doing so will enable us to continue in our small successes for the betterment of our entire community. Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I know it's public, and I'm not supposed to speak, but I have a question, can I ask a question?
Sure, and if it relates to the fire, that's why I have the chief here.
Yeah, it does relate to the fire department. Because you're right, we can't afford a fire boat. Is there something that would be more cost-effective that the city could look at, that the fire department could look at for budgetary reasons, that if we're on a fire like this and it's A type of hose with a pump on it or something that could put water onto the fire?
So, if we were to...
I'm sorry. I think it's a great question, and it should be discussed. We just need to make sure we post it on an agenda to fairly apprise the public. So I'm going to ask the city manager if he'd consider putting that on a future agenda. Thank you.
My name is Carol Salinas, I'm a resident of Aransas Pass. And fortunately, unfortunately, about three years ago, I had a medical emergency. My husband was out of town. Luckily, a neighbor was there and grabbed me, literally, and took me, when we had an ER room, to the ER. But my husband, when he found out, he called the fire department. It was, my neighbor's daughter ran out and took pictures and posted, it was 10 minutes about, that there was an ambulance and a fire truck. I'm lucky, they didn't literally bust down my door. The neighbor went over there and said, "No, no, she's already over there with my wife at the ER." I'm just very, very glad that we have a paid department here, and from personal experience, I want to say thank you, and they definitely earned our trust, my trust. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dean Thomas. I own Slow Ride Guide Services and Kayak Rentals at 821 South Commercial Street, right here in downtown Aransas Pass. So I've owned a business on Main Street, Aransas Pass, for 19 years. I've watched many councils, many mayors come and go through those years. Been active, trying to promote a lot of activities in the city. So I've actually been in this room a lot of times over the years. What I've seen in my neighborhood right now, it is cleaner, it is safer by tenfold from what it was in the past. I would like to say thank you to our fire department for the service that they provide, the safety, the security that comes with our leadership and our first responders is incredible to what it was a few years ago. The disservice from one of our council members to go on Facebook, while the fire is raging, all I can think about is my friends over here who are fighting for their life and how they're doing this. And at the exact same time, we have a city council member who is degrading their effort, posting pictures of the fire truck that's not there without even knowing what's going on. So not only is it a disservice, a discredit to those guys, so I want to take a minute and say, "Thank you very much for being there. Thank you, chief." And hopefully, we learned a lesson from this, and we do not discredit our first responders while they're in the act of saving somebody's life. Thank you very much.
Carol Salinas, I have another comment. The fire boat is a wonderful, great idea, but if you think about the money it would cost, and the small number of residents it would serve, I don't really think it's the way most of the residents would want their tax dollars spent. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, my name is Danny McQuaid. I'd like to ask permission to speak, because I'm not a citizen of the city, just outside the edge. I went by and looked at that fire those guys fought, they done a heck of a job. They truly, truly did. The hydrant, it's a 1,500 GPM hydrant about 200 foot away, your engine is only a 1,500 GPM pumper. So that one pumper took up that water supply by itself until the pumps got kicked on. So if you add stuff behind that, it being a dead-end system, those guys were fighting uphill to start with. A hat thought for my brothers, that's all I can say about that. Y'all have got a great team.
You sure, sure do.
We sure do.
Amen.
I could tell you after 30 years, yeah, you're good to go. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Chuck West, your harbor master. Many years ago, my wife and I lived out in the country. So many years, it was back when I was in college. We learned about spontaneous combustion when we came home late one night, and our kitchen wall was on fire from wet straw bales up against the house. Of course, we called the fire department, which was the volunteer fire department. Good old boys, half of them, they had to find down at one of the bars. And they got there pretty quick, and every one of those firemen jumped out off the truck and attacked my house with axes. And I'm like, "Guys, no, no, the fire's around here on the back." And these good old boys, most of whom were friends of mine, did more damage with the axes than the fire did. But they eventually got it out. So I'm highly supportive of professional firefighters. Thank you, chief, for the work that your men do. I wish they'd work for free and we could call them volunteers, but they won't do that. Anyway, Will Rogers said, "Never pass an opportunity up to shut up," so I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just an experience that I had personally, probably a few years back, a while back. We had, our church was on fire, and it's down on North 7th Street. And we called the fire department, and it was at night, and at that particular time, the fire chief went to check to see if he really needed to call an engine to come out. The church was destroyed. If they had gone out, and I think at that time it was volunteer fire department, but I think the key behind it was, they had to, the fire chief, that was his policy, he would go and check the fire to see if they really needed to call, how many trucks or how many individuals they needed. And we were just down two blocks from the north side of town. And I feel like, it was more the church members that were out there with the hose that we had to try to save. They were able to save one of the small structures, but then all of the churches burned, because the fire team wanted to make sure that it was, it needed to have fire department or the engines go out and try to fight the fire. So I'm just happy with what we have, the fire department that we have, that you don't wait, you don't go out and investigate to see if you need to call a fire truck.
They respond immediately.
Just from experience, they're happy with us. So, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Evening, Mayor, Council. Clayton Scruggs, just bought a house at 241 South 10th. The issue with the closed, no-loop water system, my company, I'm superintendent and a partner at Isaac's Contracting, we do horizontal directional drilling, especially underwater out, or waterways out there, instead of cutting up people's driveways and stuff, just for future, maybe, to have a loop system. You could drill at the end of one of those streets, underneath the canal, to one of the other ending streets, and have a loop system. We've done this in the past for subdivision out off of 1069 outside of Rockport, I forget the name of the, Cape Valero is the name, and Key Allegro as well. We've helped the city of Rockport do that. So, just for the future, instead of cutting up and adding a whole bunch of line to loop all the way around the whole subdivision, it could be done. Not saying we have to do it, obviously, but...
But...
Just saying, for future, it can be done that way, and it's a lot cheaper and shorter and easier to just make two tie-ins instead of digging up everyone's front yards. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Okay, then, we're going to go into executive session. Section 551.071 of the Texas Open Meeting Act, to meet with his attorney to seek legal advice on a matter which is a duty of the attorney to the city council under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct, if the state law of Texas clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meeting Act and Section 551.072, deliberations regarding the real estate property as it relates to commercial contract with 630 Ransom Island Partners LLC, formerly known as Blue Waters Partners LLC, for unimproved properties with an addendum of special provisions for Oasis CAD number 380310A-2A-61 acres of land, Ransom Road Track 7, commonly known as 630 East Ransom Road, Aransas Pass, Texas 78336. In Section 551.087, deliberations regarding economic development negotiations related to Chapter 380 Economic Development Agreement between the City of Aransas Pass and CSOHAP LLC. And that is 730.
Okay, we're going to reconvene in open session to consider and take action if any on any item, discuss an executive session, and it is eight o'clock.
Well, we need to make a motion that we accept. Is that not correct? Okay. I make a motion that we accept the 75 day extension without penalty to
Good voters.
Six thirty ransom miles. Properties.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now the next one.
I will make a motion that we approve the chapter three eighty economic development agreement between the city and SACE OHAP LLC.
This is the amendment. The amendment.
Oh, the amendment, yes. Approve the amendment for chapter three eighty economic development agreement.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion of adjournment.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now they're coming in to see how we voted.
Bye, police.